This is uh Berlin planning board meeting uh four twenty two, twenty twenty five. An executive order from the governor of Massachusetts relieves public bodies from the requirement in the open meeting law that meetings be conducted in a public place that is open and physically accessible to the public. Provided that a public body makes provisions to ensure the public access to the deliberations through telephone, internet, or satellite-enabled audio or video conferencing, or any other technology that enables the public to clearly follow the proceedings of this public body in real time. In addition, all members of the public body may participate in the meeting remotely. The open meeting law's requirement that a quorum of the body and their chair be physically present at the meeting location is suspended. All other provisions of the open meeting law, such as the requirement regarding posting the notice of the meetings, creating and maintaining accurate meeting minutes, as well as limited enumerated purposes for holding an executive session, remain in effect. So I opened this meeting at seven forty P M Tuesday, April twenty second, twenty twenty five. Do we have any, do we have a motion to accept the minutes from last meeting?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any discussion, deliberation, debate? Seeing nobody jumping up and down, I will ask you to vote. The town of Berlin, oh no, sorry Caroline.
Oh, I'll change that. Um hi.
Timothy Wheeler.
Hi.
Jay Teach.
Hi.
And Tom Sanford, aye, motion carries unanimously. Do we have any mail bills or anything else that we should pay attention to?
I reached out to um Dillison Roy and said we hadn't received payment or enough copies. Um and they said. Well, they said, who submitted the plan? And I said, it's for such and such. And they said, well, but who submitted it? And I said, I don't know, I I gotta look it up. And they said, well, let me try to figure it out. Thank you. So. I'll ask the town clerk. When I see the town clerk, whether they've received payment or not. And then if when we finally get payment, we can start the clock ticking on the days we got to act.
Okay.
So I did that.
Thank you. Did you tell them how much the fees were? I responded to you with how much the fees were for.
Yeah, you sent me that thing. And so I told him.
Told him that, okay.
Six, a hundred dollars a lot, a thousand dollars for the plan and fifty dollars for the filing fee. So it was sixteen fifty, the way I looked at it, so.
Great, that's good, thank you. I had a email from the group uh ever, Everhome Suites.
That the hotel down at River Bridge?
Yeah, I put them on the agenda, but I didn't get around to notifying them. But we could probably answer their questions since they came by email. I actually put that on the agenda, so.
Yeah, it was four seven forty five.
Yeah. At three oh seven this afternoon, Kristen. Oh, told him also, she just signed a Form A for the Allen West Street from Ross Associates. It's on the table next to the mailboxes.
Alan.
Allen West Street from Ross Associates. Wait a minute, what is that one? That's something new.
So Allen Road and West Street, but what is that?
Maybe on the east side of Allen Road as you go into it?
Hmm, isn't that Townland?
Allen Road, no.
There's a little baby bit at Townland. Right there.
Like when you enter?
Might be further down.
Some, it's, are you looking at the map?
I'm pulling it up as we speak. Allen Road, West Street. Oh, yeah, no, it's further.
It's on the left-hand side, right?
No, there's there's a lot right up against, well, do you want me to share?
Yes, please.
Hold on, there's lots of buttons I have to press to do this. Okay, then there's that. And there's that. Okay, so West Street and Allen Road. So it was, it's this piece that I was thinking about. Um but it's behind this lot.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know.
Can you go up further?
Yeah, up Allen Road?
Yeah.
I can. Where to?
Oh, what? I thought there was a piece of town-owned land on Allen Road.
On the west side?
Yeah.
Uh, there is, it's not in green. It's that lot that we thought was we were looking at it for habitat.
Right, so why do we think it's conservation land?
It's this one.
Yeah, is it?
Um, somebody found minutes, so it's not green because hmm, that's not totally true. I was gonna say because there's not a conservation restriction on it, but it was given to the, somebody found them the town meeting.
We acted to make it as open set?
We accepted it for conservation land, yeah.
I'd like to see that. I I don't understand that.
Yeah, I mean, otherwise it's a perfectly buildable lot.
Right.
I don't know enough of the history of that.
Hey, Tom, what, what, what parcel did Arthur Bergeron want to build his unit on? Wasn't it on Allen Road?
It was on Allen Road, but it was very up with, almost to the bitter end.
Also, it's further up?
Yeah.
One forty?
Hmm, I'm not sure, but it was up in that end.
Oh, one forty's got a house. One thirty-six has got a house.
Right, so this doesn't have a house.
That's the one that they wanted to build the subdivision road through to go to the Clinton parcel.
Right.
That's McDonald's. He bought that in order to prevent the people from coming in from Allen, I mean, from Clinton.
Oh, yeah.
So that takes care of that one. Why, why do I think Arthur was looking at the one that you're saying got turned over to the town?
He might, it might have been.
I can't, I mean, there aren't other pieces that are really available, are there? Up front edge?
Nope. So who's this one? So it kinda looks like it was carved out of that lot. This lot looks like it was carved out of this lot.
Right, and that's civil, huh?
Yeah.
So you think there's a town meeting vote? To the town meeting, the town.
Lisa would, Lisa has it.
Somebody wants to give the town a piece of land? We have to vote at a town meeting?
Um. That's interesting.
I don't, why do we?
Not usually, the select board has to accept it.
Right.
So why was it, so maybe it wasn't town meeting, maybe it was just select board minutes.
Okay.
Um. Or Board of Selectmen at the time.
It seems weird to me anyway. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we have two attendees, who is attending? Chris Senney's there. Matt. So we don't have anybody from the, from choice, though?
Hmm. Unless they were watching the agenda on the town website.
Right, so.
Although Chris is here, so maybe they figured it out.
So what were their questions?
Um, I emailed them to you and I can, let's see, green screen share. There, can you see that?
Yep.
Can you read it? Or is it too small?
Nope.
I don't even remember this section.
Oh, there you go.
Sixty-five percent of the total ground floor area of all commercial and mixed-use buildings shall consist of non-residential and entries lobby stairs elevators. Not exceeding twenty percent of the ground floor. Is so, the, the Hilton meets that requirement? I wonder if Chris, if he, I wonder if Chris wants to comment on that. Did he raise his hand?
He did not.
He doesn't want to comment on it, evidently.
Oh, there's, there he goes.
I don't remember this.
Chris?
Yes.
There you go.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Is my camera not on?
It's not on because I, if I promote you to a panelist, I can't put you back in the audience. I have to kick you out.
Okay. Yeah, like Tim, I'm not quite sure what we were getting at here in the zoning bylaw section. I, I think we, we were focused on mixed-use buildings.
Yeah.
The original vision had called for re, buildings that were vertically mixed-use. And where you would have stores on the first floor and apartments up above. And so I think we were, we were getting at making sure that the ground floor contained at least sixty-five percent um commercial uses. But I'm not sure if that's all commercial facilities taken together or every individual building. Um, so I'm not sure that within a given hotel or other commercial use, you, you have to meet this requirement.
I mean, it's so sixty-five percent of the total ground floor of all commercial and mixed-use buildings, it doesn't say each commercial and it says all, right?
Right.
Excluding shall consist, so the gas station, the daycare, the daycare's a commercial structure, the cafe, right, all of those have non-residential. They're all commercial.
Right, and even the hotel, I'm not sure I would consider guest rooms at a hotel to be residential. Uh, I think the hotel taken in its entirety is a commercial um operation, and so one hundred percent of its first floor would be non-residential.
Yeah, and even if we were to assume that the rooms were residential, um, it's still a sizable amount of the first floor of the hotel that's not residential. I mean, it's got all sorts of other, you get some, you got that meeting room, you've got the lot, which is good size. I mean, even if it's but it's, it's not each, it's all. That's the way we'd read this?
Yeah, I think we, we wanted to make sure that our ground floor space throughout the village was going to be retail or commercial.
Yeah.
Leaving residential uses up above.
So I didn't see is that's, well, we can do the math some more, but I don't think that's gonna be a hurdle for them to.
No, and I see they calculated it. Um, and they made, they may only have forty percent commercial on that first floor, but I don't, I think that's a misapplication of this provision.
Yeah, okay. Parking space for each dwelling located within the village center. Two and a half parking spaces.
What was the conclusion on that? Stiping. They, they do work. The scissors is not a problem for them.
What was that again, Jay?
What was the conclusion of that discussion about the forty percent versus sixty-five percent of the first floor? Just trying to write the notes.
We think it's a hundred percent.
It's, it's.
We think it's a hundred percent commercial.
Yeah.
Even though it's got all those because, because hotel rooms are resident or commercial.
Yeah, they're not, they're not permanent resident, permanent residents. It's temporary.
Yeah, okay.
And it's a full profit, well, everything's full profit, but.
And then even if we did want to look at them as residential, we'd be looking at all the first floors of everything that's commercial and or mixed non-residential principal uses. And so the, the other uses would help compensate, it seems.
And then what about second thing here?
Well, that's, I was gonna look at our parking requirement for hotels. You think after all these years I'd memorize what section and what page number, right? I can't remember anything. Parking, page seventy-seven. Hotels, motels, and other places, one parking space for each room accommodation therein, plus one space for each two employees. And adequate spaces for delivery vehicles. Two and a half parking space for each thousand square feet of gross. One parking space for each dwelling located within. So we didn't anticipate a hotel, we didn't put language into the village overlay that spoke specifically to hotels. So wouldn't we just fall back on our requirement for hotels in general?
Um, well, it gets a little thorny because if you're saying you're gonna fall back, my argument is you should fall back to the underlying zoning. It's an overlay. Underlying zoning is residential, right? Oh, it's village district. So.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't put a hotel in a village district.
Why not?
It's not allowed.
Is that true? We allow ice houses.
Disguise it as an ice house.
Totally different.
Retail, service banks, restaurant, fast food.
Ooh, an ice hotel.
Shopping, funeral, production, adult, guest, and courageous. Anyone who uses junkets, land demands. Residential. We don't allow hotels anywhere? Anywhere other than the overlay?
Is that true?
No, that's not true. I can't find hotel in our use list.
Well, we, we should search, uh, we'll continue this search later because we're bumping up against the public hearing.
We have a definition for hotel.
Yeah.
Yep, sounds good.
So we'll table this until after the uh public hearings. Just so we don't run afoul of anybody.
Sounds good.
All right, so the, we should open the hearing for the first, I think what you, your first one on the agenda, Jay, was the ADUs?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so let's open the public hearing for the ADUs. At eight oh two P M. Four twenty-two, twenty-five. Is there people in the audience?
Just Matt and Chris.
Okay, so, so.
I'm gonna put Chris back in, actually.
So at this point, do we want to read it or do we wanna just?
Listen to public comment.
Okay.
Maybe an overview, isn't it kinda long?
We should probably do an overview, do an overview, yeah. Will you do that?
Who's, who's presenting this at town meeting?
We usually draw a cross, whoever gets the shortest one.
Oh, I hope you're pointing to the same person in the corner that's in my corner, which is Tom.
Oh, no, I'm probably, Jay.
Oh, Jay, Jay's, Jay's over there for me.
Jay's over there for me.
There's his whole screen, not just his background.
I don't know, do you think I should present it?
You know the most about it.
Right, you did the most work on it.
Yep.
I'm taking advantage of it, which may be, maybe one of the few people in town who does. I don't know if there's any concern about that or not.
Now.
No.
I mean, we're basically just copying the state.
Right, I mean, if it was all slanted towards your advantage, then I'd say this is not gonna be made, but it's just basically a regurgitation of what they're telling us we can and can't do.
One unit per lot, except for Jay.
Yeah. Well, Chris and Matt, as you may know, back in, I think, November, the governor included in this large housing bond bill um and implemented on February fifth, a requirement that all cities and towns in Massachusetts allow the construction of accessory dwelling units either freestanding, attached apartment, or some rooms even in your house with a separate entrance to be built on an existing single-family uh zone lot. And what's very different about what we have had on the books before is that it can be occupied by anyone, not just a family member, caregiver, or employee. So they can be used for the previous uses of in-law apartments, things like that, but now they can also be used as uh long-term rentals, not short-term rentals. And those, those buildings, those, these are called uh uh protected use accessory dwelling units. So the previous accessory apartments that we allowed were called accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and the new ones are now called protected use, and we're calling them P A to use. Uh, they can be half the floor area of the primary home. And the definition of floor area is similar to the uh building code, except it includes basements. That's the main difference. And it can be no larger than nine hundred square feet. And it can be connected to, it has to be provided with septic and well in our town. And that can either be sharing an existing septic system, assuming that the finished combination of the primary unit and the accessory unit uh with the existing system meet Title V for the number of bedrooms present, and it can share water from an existing well. Um, and it needs to be permitted and inspected to the mass state and uh federal building code. Exactly as a single-family home would, and then if you choose the um attached apartment route, um it's not just the residential code, it's the commercial code where you need to have a firewall between the two of them. And so we are proposing to the town um to vote to include in our zoning bylaw a section that talks about these protected use ADUs. And we've pretty much copied the state guidelines. There's really not a lot of flexibility. Um, we, we don't have a lot of control over what can be done. Except that it needs to meet the building codes and the setbacks from the lot lines, but it does not need to go on a conforming lot, and to make a conforming lot less conforming, and that's allowed. Have any questions about that?
Nice job.
Yeah, I know, nice job.
The intent, by the way, because I should start with it, was to address the um strong belief of our governor and the business community that there's not enough housing, but particularly enough affordable housing in the state. And even though we've had a number of programs to try to fix that, this doesn't seem to have helped too much. So this is kind of an interesting way of getting more smaller and therefore likely affordable housing onto existing properties across the state.
Yeah, so the small A affordable is to large A affordable. Yeah.
Yeah, we cannot require that these are be, that these be legally affordable um units.
Right.
Even though just because of the size and the fact they're sharing a lot, they're likely to be less expensive as with their rentals, intended to be rentals.
Hmm.
In California, interestingly, they keep adding to their ADU by law, and I don't know, they're either talking about it or have allowed that they can be sold, the units can be sold independently as condominiums.
Whoa.
No.
Yeah, somebody actually asked at, it's not called coffee talk anymore, but asked the other night um if that was a thing that we were allowing.
Yeah.
There's no mention of it in the stuff now. There are a couple of other things in California, they keep pushing harder. And they, they claim a lot of success for it, but I was trying to find how many units have actually been built, because it's been, that's been on the books since, I think, twenty sixteen. And the largest estimate I saw probably through the end of twenty-four was eighty thousand units. Um, it's not clear is how many of those, like in our town, I wouldn't be surprised if a number of people use this bylaw to make the current ADUs that they've not ever told anybody about legal. Right, so in California, there may have been a lot of ADUs that were just kinda below the radar. And then there's a variety of reasons why you would wanna make them comply with the, with the law. Right, so I don't know what percentage of those. And then eighty thousand units seems like a lot, but I was, I was calculating what percentage of the housing units in California that is, and I think it's point zero four percent.
Yeah.
In an almost ten-year period.
Well, and they don't have a lot of, well, I guess in the cities, I think of the, I think of all the houses being pretty crammed in. That there's not a lot of extra space to put additional units anyway.
So that's one of the interesting ones is that in L A, for example, a large percent of the dwelling units there are now this legalized ADUs. But again, I'm assuming they were you know, secret apartments that have now become legal, because they couldn't have built, how would they have built that many? So they keep trying, okay, they keep adding new, new ways of making them more attractive to get more people to take advantage of it.
Right.
Good. You're all set, nice job.
Okay, thanks. I'm kinda wondering what questions we might get.
We didn't get much at the coffee talk.
Oh, really?
Yeah, no, I mean, definitely people asked if um, you know, they would be allowed to be sold separately from the house.
They did, okay.
Um.
I was trying to think what else they asked.
I know.
Oh. They asked about setbacks, I think.
Yep, and driveways and.
And we talked about the fact that since you can't, you can't require a special permit or site plan approval for a residential unit in a neighborhood, then you, so you can't require that for ADUs, and although it might be nice to be able to let people have an opportunity as in a butter to comment on the construction of an ADU in an adjacent lot, we, we can't provide for that, so.
Yeah.
Um.
Right.
Cause and then we did talk about s, I think um, Peg asked about septic. And we said, you know, border health requirements are still gonna apply, so if you can meet those with the number of bedrooms you've got, and you've got capacity, you can go ahead, so. That was about it, though, I think.
Yeah, and there's this practice of deed restriction, you know, having a three-bedroom house and deed restricting it to two to make up more for your ADU.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't know that that's provided by law. I think that's a choice that the local board of health makes, whether they wanna do that or not, I think.
Yeah, enforcement on that would really be tricky, so.
I've been uh talking about this with as many people as I can in town, and there's just very little awareness.
Yeah.
Awareness about the state law?
Yeah.
Huh.
Yeah, very few people heard it.
I mean, I can imagine that being the case, and we've been talking about it for months and months and months, because we knew it was breathing down our neck, but if you went on the planning board and you weren't paying attention, I mean, it, it would fly under the radar pretty easily, I would think, so.
Yeah.
Sometimes when there's articles on the warrant and people get the warrant, start reading it, that, you know, you get a call and someone says, what, what's this?
What is this?
I haven't heard anything from anybody, so.
Well, my next-door neighbor at the Crosby House, I met her in the yard the other day, and was talking to her about it, and she said, oh, I saw that in the warrant, but it looked really confusing. I kinda wasn't sure what it was about. Which it is, right, it's not.
Yeah, when I was down at the dump, the transfer station, collecting signatures for my rerunning, several people asked, you know, what the planning board was working on. Several people asked, you know, what the planning board was working on. And so I definitely mentioned it then. Um, but. Nobody really had any further questions.
Yeah, maybe when, when uh, we start building them, there's people.
Yeah.
But if you have a lot, it's gonna happen, generate a little more interest.
Right now, it's just. If you're not planning on putting on your property, it really doesn't really matter.
Right.
Right.
Your neighbor starts to build next door, and then you're gonna be like, ah, what's that?
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Well, we've been digging all this clay out of the ground, and we decided to use it as a. Burn to separate the neighbor house from the. Give them some pride, you know, privacy.
Right, good job.
Meanwhile, I've been looking for. Uh, manufactured homes that could be used for people to make ADUs. And as you go south. And out towards the mountains. Places where somebody might want to have a little cabin cottage, you know, second home. Or places, places down south where there tends to be a lot more density. Of housing, there are companies that build. Whole variety of them. A lot of metal ones for some reason. You know, like a package of metal. You, you get this flat-packed.
Well, down, down south, the metal ones would make more sense because of the termite problem.
Oh, maybe that's it, yeah.
They're horrifically loud in the rain.
Yeah, I bet. I was thinking, they, they were very economical, I was thinking, oh, maybe it wouldn't be that bad to get one of those and screw it all together, but then I went to Lowe's one day. And they had mismarked the price on a uh, one of those sheds. You know, metal shed. Like, it was when the price, prices were skyrocketing and they hadn't updated it. And so I said, oh, maybe I'll take it. And I brought it home. And then we opened the box up and saw how many screws were in it, which was in the thousands. Uh-oh, this will just.
And that's a shed.
And it's still in the box.
Well, you're not supposed to do it with a screwdriver. Putting each one of them in.
Yeah, they make this thing called the drill.
Yes, we're done, well, even then.
Now, if you're gonna do it, you're gonna do it with a collated gun, so it's auto-fed and.
Yeah.
Yeah. I got one of those for She-Rock.
Yeah.
I can't get anybody to use it, though.
For She-Rock? No, I don't like using for She-Rock.
They don't want it.
Whatever reason. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well. Alrighty, is there uh, anything else we should talk about this, or? There's no audience participation, so. At this point, I'll take a motion to. Uh, close this hearing for this particular. Article.
So moved.
So moved.
I think.
Alrighty, I have a. Motion in a second to close the hearing on this. Article. And I don't see any further discussion, so I'll ask you to vote Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
J Teach.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye, motion carries unanimous to close this. Particular hearing. Um, we've got a few minutes before the next hearing, because that. Do we set it, we set a time, didn't we?
Yes, eight thirty.
Okay, alright, so we gotta wait. A little bit.
Um, we can vote on this one, too.
Okay.
You know, we, I'll move that we. Support the article for ADUs um, and report that to the town meeting.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second to support this article. Uh, for town meeting, so I'll ask you to vote uh, J Teach, aye. Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous.
Perfect.
The word we're using, support the article, what was the word?
Yeah, it's, it's support.
I think, yeah, because what would, the reporter will usually say voted in favor, four in favor, zero opposed, and so. I can write the report, because I got them in the, I mean, I got the template in the computer, I just crank them on.
Do we also want to vote about the floodplain?
We need to have a hearing first.
Oh, do we have that scheduled?
That's for eight thirty.
Ah.
So at eight thirty, I'll open that hearing up and. We'll.
Do you want to talk about parking for nine minutes?
Sure. Well, do you want to talk about parking, or you want to talk about the fact that we don't have a hotel provision in our town?
I, I, I'm, I'm looking at, I look at definitions and we have hotel.
Yep.
Um, but unfortunately, hotel says. Something interesting, which. Um. A building. Or group of buildings providing accommodations on a transient basis for compensation, fine, where the individual units do not contain separate kitchen facilities.
Go really.
Um, and which may include facilities for meetings, conferences and others, so. You know, we, we, we can't match that up with what we do in the overlay, certainly. And then a motel, which. Doesn't really apply, then if I go to the use chart again. I, I just thought I went through the whole use chart to try to find. Hotel, I mean, it's allowed specifically in the overlay, is, you know, it's in that language that we've got for the. For the uh. Village overlay, but. There's no provision for it in. The table of principal uses. Agricultural. Recreational, residential, educational. We have. Public and private nonprofit educational institutions. Commercial uses, retail stores, service establishment, business, banks, restaurants, fast food. Shopping centers, funeral home. Arts and crafts, adult use, gasoline, garages. Automobile, automobile dealerships, junkyards, laundromats. High water usage, research and development, residential conference and training center. Conference, that's. You know, commercial photographers, building materials, sales room, large-scale solar photogenic. Contractors, telecommunications house, building mill and telecommunications, then all the marijuana stuff, then utilities, utility structure, private utility structure, public utility. Industrial uses, medical research, storage, wholesale, printing, hazardous, heavy duty. There's no hotel.
Hmm. So how did the?
It's in the overlay language.
Okay.
So you could have another one, I mean, that's no problem, it's just that. I, eh, you know, I thought, okay, so we'll fall back on the hotel. Use that's allowed in the rest of the town and use the parking language that applies to that, but it's not a use that's provided for, so. We can't, you can't go to the parking section and. What did I say, seventy-seven? See, so in the parking section. Hotels, motels and other places for providing overnight accommodation is. Listed. So if you fell back on that to decide how much parking was required for a hotel in the. Overlay district. Cause I don't, did we? Did we call out? Highway stopping. Village overlay district.
How many uh, parking spaces per room? Are provided at?
One.
Assistant.
Parking and loading, development in the village overlay district. Two and a half parking space for each thousand square feet, one for the, one for assisted living, one gross leasable area of institutional. Excuse me, may be meant by combination of on-road parking, off-road parking. Mixed-use villages may be determined by the planning board. So we have a lot of latitude, loan, huh, parking requirements within the mixed-use village may be met by a combination of on-road parking and off-road parking. Within the mixed-use villages may be determined appropriate. By the planning board through the village overlay site plan approval. Loading spaces, parking areas shall be landscaped, the amount of parking and loading areas shall be constructed, shall be shown. This bylaw not constructed apply as part of the V O, planning board may. So it's up to us. That's the beauty of this.
Yeah.
Parking requirements within the mixed-use village may be met. By a combination of on-road parking, off-road parking within the mixed-use villages may be determined appropriate by the planning board. Parking, two and a half parking space for each thousand square feet or gross leasable area of commercial buildings, one parking space. For each dwelling, one parking space for every four assisted living units and one parking space for every thousand square feet or gross leasable area for institutional uses, so. It's up to us. So if, if they came in and said. We've got a hundred sixteen rooms, we can only do a hundred and ten.
Well, you know what, they have a hundred seventeen rooms, they can only do a hundred eleven.
So there's.
Yeah, so.
No.
It's massive.
Thank you, one of the things that they could do is, is the, the, the potential for having a hundred percent occupancy. Is probably low, number one, and number two, if it is, it's probably an event that they have it like the D C U center or something like that. So they may be able to make a deal with the. People at the growing room, because those events are going to be on the weekends. And the growing room wouldn't be used during the weekends. So they could throw a couple of cars over there and. Satisfy their requirement.
Right, but they're only uh, six short, which is probably immaterial.
Right.
Does anybody know how often the other hotel is at full capacity?
I mean, Chris has talked about eighty percent. And up to ninety, I guess, but I don't know how often they're booked out totally. Who raised his hand?
He did, he did. Hey, Chris.
Hi. Uh, the Ho- the Homewood Suites. Uh, is between seventy-five and eighty percent occupancy, which is a really good. Occupancy, there are times. When they are sold out. Uh, and um, the hotel has, I think, one per. A hotel. Guest room and. A number for employees.
Yeah.
So I think, I think when we got the site plan approval for Homewood Suites. We were. A- applying under that provision Tim just read, which was four fifty-seven point two. Which allows the planning board and site plan review to make the final determination. So hotels generally need one per, one per guest room and then parking for. Uh, the expected number of employees.
I recall when we were doing the deliberations for that. That we were going to run into, we potentially were going to run into a problem if the restaurant pad was built out. At that point, we were going to have potentially a parking squeeze. But we felt that. At that point in time. The number of times we're going to have full hundred percent occupancy and a full restaurant will probably. Not the same, it won't kind of happen at the same time.
I think that's right.
Yeah, and it does sound as though we felt, we fell back on the one space per room plus one space for every two employees. Or something similar to that, which is what we've got in the.
Bylaw.
Chat, you know, the chart for parking in general, so.
Okay.
Okay.
So what message should I send back to uh? Tim, the other Tim.
Tell them that it's the uh, in the purview of the planning board and that we can review it at site plan approval.
Yeah.
That our general guidelines is one per room and. One per every two employees.
Yeah.
Just what they know, and the, right, okay.
And then the other one, the ratio. We believe that. It's a hundred percent commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good.
And we're right on schedule.
Thank, thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chris.
Take care.
Are you caught up, Jay?
Yes.
Okay. So at this point, we can open the public hearing for our next article, which is for. Updating the language for floodplain and floodplain mapping and. What have you to come into compliance with the federal government. Do we have an overview? Jay, do you have?
Wheeler, Mr. Wheeler.
What?
Mr. Wheeler has that.
Oh.
Ball in his court.
Oh, okay. Mr. Wheeler has an overview. Would you like to share it with the class?
Yeah, what did I say the other night? Um, as a result of modifications to the state and the federal guidelines for floodplanes. Um, through FEMA and. All the other agencies. Um, we've been advised that our bylaw. Which we have had in place for decades now and modified as necessary. Is not up to par with what they expect, so. Uh, model bylaws were supplied to us by the state and we've reviewed those and worked closely with an agent from the state and. Um, they helped us answer a lot of questions and helped us resolve some of the conflicts that we felt. Existed and. Um, we've written up this. Bylaw based on their draft, which provides for. Um, the. Definition of where the floodplain areas are and the process by which. One gets a permit to do anything within the floodplain, which may be the construction or any type of modification to the. Um. Landscape and. Who the enforcing officer is, which would be the building inspector and. And provisions for uh. Well, what else is there? That's about it. So we've tried to modify the bylaw to agree with the new federal guidelines and. We don't have a lot of latitude, the definitions. Because some of them. Potentially were in conflict with the definitions that we had in the main body of our bylaw. Are embedded in the language for this section and that when we. At some point rewrite our zoning bylaw, which we hope to do over the course of the next year, we'd um. Move those definitions into the general definition section wherever possible. That's about it.
That was a very good overview, thank you.
Um, I think there's. There's a little statement at the beginning that says why you do it, I might use some of those. You know, it's to protect utilities to. You know, the flood insurance issue is. You know, you're trying to. Make it possible for people not to, you have to pay exorbitant amounts of money for flood insurance, because they. Foolheartedly built in the floodplain and stuff like that, so.
Yep.
I'll probably pull those. I think there's five or six points at the beginning.
Will you be willing to present that at town meeting?
I can do that.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
I think, I think both of these, well, there'll be a couple of questions, but I don't. Due to the fact that they're both. Sort of required. Hmm, it's not. Sort of something that we just dreamt up and said, wouldn't this be nice? It's something that we're required to do, so.
Yeah.
We've, we've used, we've used the guidelines and the. Models and we believe that we'll probably modify these over time um, in subtle ways, but we're prepared to do that and. We needed both of these to be on the books to be in compliance, so. What the heck?
Right, and we're protecting the town.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, by adopting these.
Yep.
I need an assigned alternate because I'm gonna be in town all day. I should be able to get back out here. By Wednesday, seven thirty or eight.
Town meeting?
Yeah.
Uh, it starts at six thirty, doesn't it?
Six thirty.
It's early this year, but we're at the end.
Yeah.
We're at the end, but there's not a ton on either.
No, but it'll take a couple hours. It took us a couple hours to do the explanations, the other night at coffee talk.
Yeah.
So.
Alright, so I should definitely be back by then.
Eight thirty's fine.
It's no problem.
Yeah, it'd be, mean, be great to be out of there by eight thirty.
Wouldn't that be crazy?
It ain't gonna happen.
It ain't gonna happen.
But it doesn't seem like a multi-night event, it seems like.
Yeah, I was, I was surprised by how few items were on the warrant. We've been up in the forties in the past few years.
Well, you know, they've combined so many things now into one vote.
Right.
Right.
That streamlines the process quite a bit. A lot of those redundant things that we do here, they've just said, okay, we'll do all that in a package.
Right.
We had some issues with. You know. Entities within town that weren't behaving. That were trying to uh. Money grab or whatever we want to say. Were following the general guidelines of everybody else was following.
What?
So I move that we close the hearing on this one.
I would second that.
There we have a motion to. Close the hearing in a second, and do we want any, is there any other? There we have a motion to close the hearing in a second, and do we want any, is there any other? Thing to be said about this before we take our vote, seeing none, nobody in the audience jumping up and down?
Nobody in the audience even sitting down.
Okay, then we will ask you to vote to close this hearing. JT.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye, motion carries unanimous.
So I move that we support this article and present it at town meeting. Present our, our vote at town meeting.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to present this, present our vote and this article at, uh, town meeting. And I will ask you to vote on that, JT.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye, motion carries unanimous, excellent.
Um, Trish settles, got in touch with Kristen to say that. A few towns in the region had been notified about their EEA proposals. And asked Kristen if she had heard anything in regard to ours, I guess people got notified yesterday or today. And Kristen.
Positively?
It sounded like a couple of them had been positive, so Kristen said she hadn't heard anything yet, so. I don't know what that means, I mean, they, they, they felt pretty good about the fact that we. Get it, but the fact we haven't heard and a couple of the towns have suggests that. They did it alphabetically, we're in trouble.
I was gonna say.
Yep.
So we'll see. Um, that would mean that we'd go for the one stop proposal, which they reached out to us and said, would we like to do that if we didn't hear from EA, I mean, this way at least. We know one way or another before we have to make the decision about the one stop.
Right.
Right.
The other piece that I noticed is that where in the past we've had a. Article or a line item that gives us some money for, uh, master plan work, that's not on there this year.
Shoot, we didn't put it on.
Yeah, so, um.
Darn.
You know, we've, we've got everything from last year and some, I think, from, I mean, there's some money stashed there, so.
We have some money, yeah.
I think we were talking about using about twelve thousand for the one stop, I mean, for the EA, so I.
But we had that.
We had that in hand, so we should still be all right. I know that I went and talked to, um, Amy in the accounting office, because June was out and. Asked about that document, you know, we get what it says, you know, we, we'll close these accounts unless we hear from you.
Yep.
And I didn't look carefully again at those, I. But those, that's. You know, there may be, if I'll look at those again and make sure that we didn't have some stuff that we really want kept canceled. That's here somewhere. Cause if that were the case. We could probably make a, a motion on the floor to amend. The removal of those, if we were gonna lose something that we wanted. I'll check that. The only other thing I wanted to ask about is the letter of understanding with Marlboro, which. Uh, I talked to Paul Anderson today, he's on the economic development committee, and he said that he talked to Liz Kelly and. She indicated, that was maybe a week and a half ago or so, that. The interest shown in the Solomon Pond Mall sale thus far doesn't seem to attract a bunch of bottom feeders. Um, which was good news, it's.
Yeah.
Folks looking for legitimate opportunity. But it does mean that I think we need to. Push forward on our letter of understandings, because we were talking about sending that to Meredith in Marlboro, having her look at it, comment on it, make any. Other additions and then.
Right.
Sending that to town council and. Um, and Thomas wanted to add a couple paragraphs.
Right.
So. I didn't, I didn't see anything yet. With the next time we meet is the, what, the thirteenth of, twelfth of May or something, thirteenth of May?
I'm like, well, so town meeting's on the fifth.
Right.
Let's see, thirteenth, yeah.
Yeah, thirteenth of May, um. You know, if we could get Thomas to. Put together the other couple. Paragraphs that he wants, I don't think it's that complex. Uh, if, if we call a meeting for town meeting, so we could just quickly in four or five minutes, say. Looks fine to us, send it to Meredith, so we get that ball rolling, and then Meredith gets back to us with comments, we could deal with those at our meeting on the thirteenth and then. Get, uh, it sent off to town council, so it might get resolved by the end of May, so the select board could send something. Particularly if they've already got some nibbles, I would think they'd want to be able to say Berlin's on board with us.
Yeah.
Right.
So we just need to post a meeting for that night.
Yeah, and then if we have a chance, we can do it, otherwise, I mean, we could post it for fifteen minutes before the meeting started or something.
We should post it anyways. We should post, post a meeting, meeting anyways, whether we need Thomas to do this stuff or not.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
All right, well, we need to make sure that Thomas is coming to town meeting and can be there early enough because we know Jay can.
Are you gonna see him?
If, if the three of us showed up, we'd have a quorum.
Yeah, but.
Oh, that's true.
Language, though, we, if we get his language ahead of time.
Right, but we don't need Thomas, is my point.
That's right.
Yes.
Are you likely to bump into him, Carolyn?
Um, not likely before town meeting.
Let me try to get in touch with him and see if, because he was talking about getting together with me about. Oh, he, he wanted to get together to talk about the hotel.
And then he also wanted to sign something.
He wanted to sign this document.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, he was gonna come and see me, okay, I'll chase him.
Okay.
Yeah, because we got ten days, so. It's, it's just. We started talking about this in January with Meredith, so we gotta, I think we gotta package it up and get it done. That's all I've got.
Cool.
Would you like a motion?
Would I?
Yeah.
Sure.
You're the chair. Uh, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, and it's a non-debatable, so I'll ask you to vote, Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
JT.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye.